I'd like to call this meeting the Westland City Council of Order. We shall begin tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance list by Councilman James Gabow.
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Councilman Gabow.
Present.
Councilwoman Green.
Present.
Councilman Hersberg.
Here.
Councilman Landau.
Here.
Councilman McDermott.
Here.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Here.
President and Hart.
Here.
A quorum is present.
We will now take questions or input on the agenda from the public. This section will allow a person to be recognized only at the beginning of the meeting to address the council pertaining to items that are specifically on the business agenda at the meeting. Questions asked will be answered during the agenda item followed by a motion and support from the council. Is there anyone on my right? Is there anyone on my left? Seeing no questions, we'll close citizens' comments on the agenda and move to the consent calendar. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Landau, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held October 19, 2020. Approval of minutes of the study session held October 19, 2020. Approval of professional services agreement with Presidio for networking infrastructure services. The agreement is on an as-needed basis at the rate of $155 per hour. Introduction of budget amendments through September 30, 2020, for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2021. Last item approved on the consent calendar, adoption of prepared resolution to proclaim November 28, 2020, small business Saturday in the city of Westland. Moving to new business, item one, approval of voucher.
Motion by Councilman Rakowski, supported by Councilman Hersberg.
Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. We now move to comments, general comments from the public. Everyone speaking before the council should do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the orderly conduct of this business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, other speakers, or members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker and will not stop while the speaker is recognized from the floor. It is the speaker's option to ask questions at this time, and the person questioned may choose to respond during the speaker's allotment of time. However, the clock will not be stopped once it is started. Is there anyone on my right? Is there anyone on my left? Sir?
Hello, Mayor, City Council. My name is Dan, and as an introduction disclaimer, I am a member of one of the marijuana business applications. I ask that each city council member individually defend their choice to approve medical facilities and the largest business opportunity Westland has ever offered based on a scoring price process that has not differentiated a single applicant on their proposed patient interaction practices, patient education, medical research opportunities, overall business plan, previous and proposed community involvement, or previous and proposed economic contributions. Please answer why you support the sole criteria Westland has used to differentiate marijuana business to be their proposed location if it's contaminated or blighted. I ask that you answer this question not to me, but to the patients unable to attend this in-person council meeting due to the ongoing pandemic, to the Westland residents, and to the larger medical community. Let me remind you that these are medical facilities, not another type of liquor store. If economic incentive is the primary goal for Westland's decision-making process, why is the scoring not reflect the quantifiable monetary incentive the city will receive under each application? If an applicant proposes to invest $1 million in an existing structure to make it a state-of-the-art facility Westland can be proud of, why is that not considered to have equal economic incentive as a $500,000 investment to build a structure on vacant land or a $50,000 investment to address blight? In a prior city council member, I asked who, city council meeting, I asked who developed the scoring matrix. Council President Hart answered that the city council was involved in the ordinance, but not specified who to score, who defined the scoring criteria. Please answer that question directly. I would like to use the remaining time to educate the city council and current, on the current hurdles to marijuana research and education. Unfortunately, the benefits and negative side effects, and there are negative side effects, of each of the many marijuana product types are largely undocumented in the medical literature. More often than not, it falls to the private business with no required medical qualifications to educate patients on available product types and the conditions they best treat, rather than the patient's own doctors, since there is little reference material and few doctors have firsthand in-depth knowledge on marijuana. It then falls to local government to incentivize or require those private businesses to use medical best practices. Unfortunately, Westland has not incentivized or required any medical best practices in the marijuana business selection. Clinical trials are currently limited due to marijuana's federal classification. However, there are other ways to further the literature available to both patients and their doctors. Specifically, this can be done through survey-based research, by surveying patients on the medical conditions they currently treat through marijuana, the specific products they use to treat those conditions, and the perceived benefits and side effects that those patients have experienced. It can provide desperately needed literature for doctors and the patients to identify what marijuana products, if any, would best treat the patient's particular condition. I urge the city council to take a similar interest in educating themselves on the medical aspect of medical marijuana, as they have to recycling, before making a decision on the medical facilities coming to serve Westland patients. I am more than willing to have that discussion immediately after this meeting, and would be honored to discuss the topic in detail with any Westland residents if they wish to learn more.
Thank you. Is there anyone on my right? Sir?
Good evening. Can I take this off as I'm speaking? Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Kevin Blair. I'm an attorney for Loom Cannabis Company, one of the applicants that is tied for, a four-way tie for the highest score among the group south of Ford Road. I wrote a letter earlier this afternoon, and I don't know if anyone's had a chance to see that yet, essentially emphasizing that the policy that the city has enacted specifically contemplates that flexibility would be required to administer the policy and select the applicants that are best suited to operate in compliance with state law as required under MRTMA. That's 2.6 of the policy. The, I believe that the city's intent was good in coming up with the rubric and the process. I think there were some unintended consequences, however, and, and the amount of time and money that has been spent by the applicants preparing for this process and submitting their application materials, the, the group south of Ford Road, there were nine applicants, and four of them are tied for the best score. So 40% of the applicants in that area got the maximum possible score, and, and under the policy, it may be that they just go into a lottery. I know that there, there are more than one council member that has publicly stated a preference for doing a merit-based selection process, and I would strongly encourage you to do that. The, if there's any thought that a lottery might reduce litigation risk, I would strongly disagree with that and, and suggest that it's probably exactly the opposite. There have been more and more litigations recently around the state on these issues, and Loom is one of the best qualified candidates by far. They have 11 stores throughout Michigan. They're a Michigan-owned and operated company, and they've had competitors challenge them when they've won these, these local competitions around the state. So again, we'd, we'd urge you to have a fair and transparent process. There are four that are tied for first right now. Three of those four have lot sizes .3 of an acre, .4 of an acre, and .5 of an acre. It is hard to imagine how a .3 acre lot size could fit in enough parking to, to service a marijuana business. That might fit 10 parking spaces at most, and they are going to need that many, if not more, just for their employees. So what we would encourage is rather than doing the lottery first and then starting the planning approval process based on whoever wins the lottery, keep it a merit-based system. As your policy contemplates...
Thank you, sir. Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Dave, and I'm going to be kind of reiterating on the same points that he made. The only thing I ask is that, you know, these number scores that were released just this past Friday that I'm sure all you guys got mean nothing other than where that business is going to be located and whether or not they had contaminated land. It has nothing to do with the business practice, who owns it, who's running it. There's going to be groups in the state of Michigan that are going to be acquiring as many licenses as possible to sell and attract other multi-state companies. There are other multi-state companies applying. So the only thing I ask is that, or I even ask to you guys, are you going to be reading these applications? Or are you only taking the scores that it will be pushed to you from the review board? Or is it something that you will deep dive into these and choose the best companies regardless of these location-based numbers? And that's kind of all I ask at this point. Thank you.
Is there anyone on my right? Ray?
First of all, I want to say good luck for the people for tomorrow because it's going to be some big elections there. Absentee ballots, mine's done. Already done it already. I mean, I'm just, you know, people might need assistance out there and getting transportation. You never know. Hopefully, the, it's not just ones even with the different challenges that live in homes that people live that should be out there voting too. Everybody, that's, that's very important to me. So anyway, as a chairperson of the Disability Concern Board, I am really proud of being on that board, and it's anyway, I met with the mayor, and I want to talk a little bit about it. 2005, I'm the one who started this, and that is my baby. And I took years where we are today in partnering and people telling me I'm doing a good job. But then, things go through the mayor, and it's up to him how he chooses to put someone on that board. You don't just put somebody on the board. It's up to the mayor, and we should be. Anyway, there is five of us, and we decided that, I liked it the way the meeting was, and so it's in the ordinance anyway, so we figured three months, we meet, and I'm really, I'm really happy with it. So I will continue as being the chair of that board, and I will, with my heart and mental health out there, is the difference. And I'm just going to point another thing out, at Speedway over there. We had panel handlers, like there's a, there's a lady up there that parks her car, approaching people, and she approached me twice. Not the first time I was being nice and said, I want, can I help you? Maybe you've spread directions. It wasn't just for the directions. She wanted money. I told her didn't have any, so I'm sorry. Then the next time, she got out of her car and approached me again when I went up there to get something at the gas station. You know what I told her? Not interested. And sometimes I put my foot down, and she went right through her car. Then when I was sitting in my car, she was out approaching other people. So I don't know in a situation like that that the police should be involved in that one or not, but she has been up there. I just wanted to point that out. Anyway, I wanted to say thank you, and just be safe when you're voting out there tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone on my left? Anyone on my right? All right, this time I'll close citizens' comments and move to comments from the administration. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Council President. Out of respect to the clerk tonight, and I know he's got a busy night tonight and all day tomorrow, we'll, we'll have no comments this evening. Thanks.
Thank you. Move to council comments. Begin with Councilman Hersberg.
Same. I'll keep my comments brief. Good luck to the clerk tomorrow. Everybody, let's have respect for differing ideas and vote and go home, and we'll all wait for the results. Thank you.
And wait. Councilwoman Green.
Thank you. I'd like to start tonight also by wishing the clerk's office a lot of luck tomorrow. We are expecting record numbers, so good luck tomorrow. Everybody be safe and please be patient. Also, I would like to notify Westland residents that our Wayne County Executive Warren Evans donated 20,000 facial masks to the residents of Westland, and I went and picked those masks up today to ensure that in the midst of us being in a COVID pandemic, our residents do not have to continue to wait for resources and PPE while they sit in a warehouse at a homeland security location. So I went and picked up the masks. So if there are any residents in need of PPE, again, our Wayne County Executive Warren Evans did make sure that Westland residents were taken care of in that manner. So you can, if you are in need, please contact the mayor's office at area code 734-467-3200 to arrange distribution. Also, I wanted to just quickly notify the residents, those of you who were not present for the study session that we just had. Our city will be ending our, possibly, it will be going before city council, but we will possibly be ending our relationship with our current trash contractor Midwest Sanitation and entering into a new contract with a trash company, which is Priority Waste, who is proposing a partnership, so to speak, with Midwest Sanitation. And I think, for the most part, Midwest has done a really good job. Anytime I have called the owner Paul Rutherford for anything for our residents, or if anything was accidentally missed, he was really expedient in getting it taken care of. So we do look forward to continuing to work with him and potentially the new company if they should, if that recommend, mayoral recommendation should pass. One of the things that was discussed during, during the study session was the mayor mentioned a possibility of proposing a 10-year contract with this new company, Priority Waste, to which I would like to notify the, the residents. With me being in support of definitely saving taxpayers' money, I am not in support of any of us, the seven of us, including the mayor and his administration as your representatives, of locking in our taxpayers into a long-term 10-year contract. When I was elected, that was the norm with several contracts, which has come back to bite the city in the butt many of times. We are not surplusing in the city of Westland. We have never had a 10-year balanced budget, our, or a 12, 14-year. We are extremely in the deficit with our retirement program, and I would like to make sure the residents know the decisions that we are making, because as your elected officials, we will be voting on that contract probably at the next meeting. And so if you do not want us to lock you into a 10-year contract with the possibility of no out clause, I encourage you to contact us as your members of city council. Contact, we're on the city website. Our telephone numbers are on the website. If you happen to have any questions for me, I can always be reached on my personal cell phone at area code 734-828-7010. Having a strong business background, one of the things that I have continuously asked Westland to do with these contracts, especially the longer-term contracts that they recommend, is include an out clause in the event that the city can no longer afford to maintain some of these alarming figures that have been approved in our city without question most of the time, and that has not been something that has always occurred. So the city of Westland is currently locked into multiple long-term contracts, and I encourage residents to look at the decisions that we are making. There will be an election next year. The mayor, myself, and three other council people are up for reelection. We should not be entering into a contract in 2020 that you could possibly still be paying for by 2030 unless we, there is some type of out clause that allows us out for whatever reason with a written notice. And when city council in the past refused to implement that in other contracts, we found ourselves, like most municipalities and states in the country, facing a severe unexpected deficit or financial delinquency here in our city due to COVID. We cannot project what will be happening in the city of Westland. Hopefully, we're doing great, but in the event that we're not, we need the flexibility to say, hey, I need you to renegotiate this contract if you want to keep our business, or we're going to have to go with somebody else because this no longer works with us. The customer service is not where we need it to be. So again, people, we are seven representatives that you elected. We work for you, and if you are not pleased with the type of business decisions that we are making with your tax dollars, I encourage you to speak up and speak up and show up if you can before we vote, because once we vote, it's too late. Thank you. God bless you, and I'll see you in two weeks.
Councilman Gabow.
Thanks. You know, I was going to keep my comments pretty brief, but, you know, there were a lot of statements there that just simply were made by my colleague that's just simply aren't true. We've had a balanced budget in this city for as long as I can remember. Matter of fact, by law, we have to have a balanced budget. So to say that we've operated at deficits in the past is, is erroneous statement. In regards to contracts and language in contracts, almost all, and most that I can remember, do have some kind of an out clause as part of the contract when they are written. So again, it's, it's not adequate, not accurate. Part of this RFP that went out, which we all received a copy of the RFP back in August, you know, indicated the desire for the city to get rid of our fleet of trucks. The current offer that comes in and the low bidder, which was Priority Waste, relieves us of our debt on all of those trucks to the tune of $1.6 million in a, in a cash payment to the city. So we, we immediately replenish our capital improvement fund. The city has operated on a balanced budget for, forever, and will continue to do so. That's all I have to say on that. It's just, in regards to the election tomorrow, good luck, Mr. Clerk. I'm sure you'll do a fine job and have red eyes. You'll probably be up here tomorrow at about this same time still processing ballots, so best of luck to you.
Way past this time.
And then finally, I just want to, you know, we talk a lot about boards and commissions, and I just want to congratulate one of our planning commissioners, Michael Williams, on his appointment by the governor to the Michigan Health Endowment Board. So we've got some, some great people sitting on our boards and commissions, and obviously the governor thinks so as well. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Good evening, everyone. In the spirit of keeping it brief, I would just encourage you, if you have not yet voted, to go to the polls, exercise your right, privilege or obligation, however you choose to view it. Do so politely, and when the results come in, you know, celebrate with your, your own spirit of civility as well. And good luck, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you.
And that is all.
Councilman McDermott.
I had a lengthier speech, but I'm going to really cut it down to save the clerk and save myself some headache from having to hear about it later, so.
Smart.
I certainly wish the clerk the best elect tomorrow. I know that our city clerk and his team are going to do an outstanding job running free and fair elections tomorrow. So, you know, I would encourage everybody, if you have a friend, a family member, a neighbor, get them out to the polls to vote, or if they have an absentee ballot, outstanding, you know, make sure they, they vote, because that, this is, this is why we vote in this country. And as long as barriers remain in place to, to voting, this is why we need to continue to push and to continue to vote. As long as people try to block the right to vote through any number of tricky legal tactics and language, block community, predominantly poor communities or communities of color, this is why we need to continue to come out and show up and vote. As long as the wealth gap exists where we have CEOs making 300 times their average worker, this is why we need to continue to come out and go and vote. When you have children who go to bed hungry at night, when you have parents who don't know if they can keep a roof over their family's head, this is why we need to continue to go out and vote. When we have an education system that prioritizes finances and resources based on your zip code or some artificial boundary and gives people in upper-income communities a better advantage than those in working class and lower-income communities, this is why we need to go out and vote. When we have police officers and firefighters and military servicemen and women who don't know if they're going to be able to return home from their job and want to be able to do it safely and with the adequate resources and funding that we know they deserve to do their job safely, this is why we need to go out and vote. When we have a government that works better for big special interests and wealthy corporations and, you know, than it does for us, the average citizens, this is why we need to make our voice heard and why we need to go out and vote. So I encourage everybody, if you haven't done so already, please exercise your right to vote tomorrow, because this is a right that for the longest time in this country, for well over 100 years, was not given to everybody. It was only given to people who looked like me, as a white, land-owning male. It was not given to individuals of color in this country. It was not given to women in this country. And even when we abolished slavery, there was 100 years of Jim Crow where communities of color did not have the right to vote. And even among them, only men of color were even given the attempt to be able to vote. And we know that that was infringed. We know that that was blocked through violence and through arrests and through various forms of intimidation like poll taxes and literacy tests. So don't take your right to vote for granted, because not everybody had it. For the longest time, over two-thirds of the people in this country were excluded from the right to vote, and even when slavery was abolished and suffragette movement was passed, that still did not guarantee the right to vote for all citizens until we passed in 1964 the Voting Rights Act. And unfortunately, we've seen that act stripped away, and that's another important reason why it is pertinent to exercise your right to vote, to make your voice heard. So if you have someone that lives in your house, if you have a neighbor, take them to the polls, encourage them to go out to the polls. If you know that somebody still has an absentee ballot, outstanding, make sure they come up here to City Hall. They cannot put it in the mailbox. It will not make it on time. It will not be counted. They have to turn it up here to City Hall. But please, exercise your right to vote, make your voice heard, regardless of who you're voting for, what political party you affiliate with, or if it's no party at all. Make your voice heard. Make sure that everybody in your house, everybody in your neighborhood, everybody in the community gets out and votes, and we're going to have free, fair, and safe elections. And I would also like to say, if you do go to the polls tomorrow and you witness voter intimidation, or you witness poll challengers who are trying to intimidate people, the ACLU has a website you can go to and also an 800 number that you can call to report incidents of voter intimidation. Hopefully, I pray that we don't see that, but please get in contact with the ACLU or with the state of Michigan if you do see instances of voter intimidation tomorrow at the polls. Thank you. God bless. Go vote.
Council President Pro Tem, Michael Landau.
Thank you, President Hart, and I thank you everyone for being in attendance tonight. I just got two or three quick things, and I'll move on, pass, pass the gavel over to Council President. It is Restaurant Week. It began November 1st, and it goes through November 7th. As a result of the pandemic, since reopening, restaurants are operating at 50% capacity or less, and it's restricted business hours and limited staff, and it's obviously decreased sales. So now we really need to step up as, as residents... As a result of the pandemic, since reopening, restaurants are operating at 50% capacity or less, and it's restricted business hours and limited staff, and it's obviously decreased sales. So now we really need to step up as, as residents and business owners here in the community and support those restaurants. Year after year, these, these folks give back to our local sports teams, to the city, to organizations, to, you know, provide Christmas gifts to people, other fundraising events, and employing our neighbors, friends, and relatives. So now's the time for us to really step up and, and back them. So the city of Westland's partnered with the Westland Chamber of Commerce to launch a Restaurant Week, which we talked about. There's a social media campaign that's taking place right now. I know a few of my colleagues joined me today for lunch, and we use the hashtag #Westland Restaurant Week. So I'd like to see your photos out there, and let's support these restaurants this week and every week. And then on the sanitation thing, I went for about 40 minutes tonight. My colleagues, I thought, asked some great questions tonight, but if anybody has any further questions, we have two weeks at least until we'll vote on that contract. I know the administration's readily available to answer any and all questions that we had before them. And with that, thank you to all the election workers and the clerk's office, has been unbelievable. I've been here four or five times in the last couple of weeks, and there's just been a line wrapped around the lobby, and it's just, you wouldn't even, you wouldn't even know. I mean, these, the clerk's office has done a fantastic job, let's just say that. So thank you to you and your, and your office, and thank you to all election workers, and please go vote tomorrow.
Thank you. I'll begin tonight by thanking Councilman Godbout for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and then thank the clerk, Mr. LeBlanc, and his entire staff for all of the amazing, strenuous, ridiculously cumbersome, difficult, rewarding work that he's been doing. I'm thankful to have him, and I'm also thankful it's not me. So really, everybody that's here, you know, if you haven't voted already, please do so tomorrow. For those of you at home, you won't see this till after it's over, so I hope you already took care of this. With that, I'm going to yield as much time back to clerk as I can. Is there a motion to adjourn?